Council meeting. This is the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, August 16th. I'm going to give the invocation and we'll have the pledge of allegiance by council member Don Williams. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for all the blessings that you've bestowed on our community. Lord, we pray for those in our country that are hurting from the violence this past weekend. And Lord, we just pray that anyone whose hearts and minds are turning to violence, that they would find the peace in you, Jesus. Lord, we just ask for wisdom, Lord, for our country and for our state and for us in this city council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery, absent. Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Then we need to approve the minutes for the July 16th, 2019, regular meeting and dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilman Williams, a second by Councilman Larkin. All in favor?
Oh, we're gonna vote with the... Yeah, the computer will get the vote.
Our computer is working.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay. And there's the results. It's up on the screen and y'all should be able to have seen it on y'all's iPad.
Yeah, it's working. It's great.
Okay, council, we have one add-on under new business. It's gonna be number 25. And it's going to be, um, adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property of public health and safety due to the requirement for the utility relocation on Cross Creek Drive for a total of $210,000. Fifty percent of the funds are to come from the sewer capital contingency fund and 50 percent from the water capital contingency fund and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Pulli Construction, Inc. for completion of work. This is gonna be a first and final reading and it's added on. Um, there was, uh, the parish contacted us to coordinate this work. All documents needed to be formalized in this ordinance were not in hand until this morning and the deadline to complete the work is August 30th.
So we need a motion?
Yes, sir. To add that on.
Motion by Councilman Larkin.
A second.
Second by Councilman Williams. Any comments from the audience? Now, please cast your vote. Now, we need to...
Make a motion.
Yeah, accept the minutes.
Approve this. Agenda has amended.
Everybody...
So we have a motion by Councilman Williams.
Second.
Taken by Councilman Free. Any comments from the audience?
Williams and Free. Okay.
Uh, council, please vote.
Working for everyone?
It's everybody, isn't it?
Yes.
Got a motion carries. So let's see, do we have any guests here today? Any youth leadership members? Uh, we'll move on to committee reports. Uh, we have a committee report from Ben Rochenbach of ManShack regarding our public-private partnership update. Ben?
Good afternoon. I'm gonna cross my fingers and hope for the best here.
Hi, Ben.
How'd you do that?
I could, I did it.
Oh, you sent the PDF. Let me, let me try it.
Okay.
Maybe the other way was better.
That's, that's him now. That's his screen.
I can drop them if you want.
Okay. Good afternoon, council. Appreciate you guys having me here today. This, uh, presentation will primarily look at our expenses, our activities from June of 2018 to, uh, June of 2019, the last 12 months. So, these slides are gonna look pretty similar to the slides you've seen, uh, in, in past presentations, just freshened up for the last 12 months. You could see in operational savings, uh, compared to, if you recall, we compare everything back to 2016 budget. So, in comparison to 2016 budget and operations, we were just shy of 1.7 million in actual savings, uh, in the operations department. And we have budgeted around 1.6 and, and that's a decrease from previous years and primarily that's due to the 17, 18 percent salary increases that we had through, throughout last year. So, just to kind of summarize for operating, we were looking at, uh, like I've mentioned, about 1.7 million in savings, it's a little over $160,000 a month, um, versus our target, which was right around, uh, about $131,000 a month. So, all told, we saved a little more than $100,000 extra. Uh, we beat our target for the year, um, and ranged somewhere in the neighborhood of about $10,000 extra in savings. You'll see in, in further slides, we, we did a lot of work. There was a lot of emergency, self-performed, cost avoidance work throughout the year due to moisture and precipitation, cold weather and everything else. Something we track, we look at emergency repair work. Um, in that span of 12 months, there was about $1.1 million approved by the council for emergency repairs. The lion's share of that is in deep sewer projects that are difficult for our internal staff to, to perform. Uh, and, and we look at a competitive bid process when we do that. Uh, we don't have, you know, any engineering, construction, admin, all of that is, is performed internally and that amounts to, um, just shy of $300,000 in savings. And then we, the primary thing that we're constantly looking at are cost avoidance measures. These are things that, um, we, we want to self-perform, whether it be lift station cleaning, big water main repairs, uh, major sewer main repairs and the like. And these are things that we do not have to subcontract out. And to get kind of a picture of that, hopefully you can kind of see on this slide, but the, the blue dots that you're looking at, um, the lion's share of those are water service repairs, the, the green dots are sewer repairs. And you see a bunch of them on there, that only represents five months. So, we complete on average somewhere between 90 water and sewer repairs monthly and these range from, you know, three-quarter inch water service to a major water main. Um, uh, and that's done with, with three maintenance crews out in the field. Um, and it, it's, it's pretty impressive once you start to put that on a map and, and really see where some of the areas are. You can notice, it's hard, but on the green areas there, sort of on the right-hand side of the map, uh, that's the Meadowview area, BC 10 area, you've seen a lot of construction going on in that area. Um, we were excited about that project being done and hopefully the number of green dots will be reduced there. And then kind of the same focus of green dots a little to the left, um, that's, that BC 15 or Old North Bossier area. And again, big basin project that's underway there to kind of clean up some of those older parts of town. And on top of that, um, you know, the, the maintenance crews have become experts in using trench boxes, um, to get in and do some of these deeper utilities and, and work with, with the equipment and people and personnel materials that we have to help save the city some money. We've gotten confirmation from local contractors that there has been a decline in subcontracted work. Um, I don't think they're super happy about that, but they have acknowledged it. Um, we also have journeymen electrician on staff and that's in our lift station division and that helps out a lot. We don't have to call electricians to come do work. We do a ton of electrical work in, in-house and, uh, we continue to educate personnel and explore ways to add value to the utility department. So if you combine all of that, uh, the emergency work, cost avoidance, you're looking at in 2018, over the last 12 months, between June of 18 and 19, a little shy of $3 million in savings and you track that from when we started in 2016, it's just shy of 9 million, um, in, in operational savings to the city. Just kind of a recap of some of the things we've been actively involved in over the last 12 months. We just completed our operating and capital budgets, draft budgets, I should say, those still haven't come to y'all for approval. Um, we're finalizing the five-year capital improvement plan we do every year. Um, we, we talked about that, 327 water and sewer main repairs, uh, water treatment plants completed, 41 capital improvement projects over the last 12 months in excess of $1 million. Lift station division, we got a bunch. We just kicked off a big miscellaneous lift station improvement project that'll rehab six lift stations. Just lots and lots of work. Waste water treatment plant, they monthly are doing continual routine preventative maintenance. Um, a lot of work, uh, within the water distribution system to monitor water quality. You know, we're out sampling daily, uh, flushing, many of y'all have probably seen that in some of your districts with our guys out there flushing, sampling, testing and, and mix and repeat. Uh, we meet with LDH quarterly, they're actually here, uh, with their field crews sampling Bossier's water two to three times a week as part of, uh, the total coliform rule sampling that they do for the state. Um, and that's all gone well. We'll have a meeting with them just to give them a status update next week. And the last slide here, uh, Councilman Irwin asked me to put the, together a little report on the trees out at the Red River plant.
That's a nice-looking tree.
Yeah, those are nice-looking trees. Um, we, we have spent a lot of energy trying to protect those. It hasn't been easy. Uh, yeah, unbeknownst to us that, uh, Leland cypress is not a real, uh, easy species to get rooted and, and kicked off, but we've got operational procedures in place, they inspect them daily. Um, uh, we, we put herbicides on them, pull the bag worms off if we see any and, and continue to do that until the tree is, uh, looking like that. And they are, they, they gained probably 50 percent or better in size, they're starting to get big. So it's gonna be nice to have a little more screening down that area. Any questions?
Counsel? Any questions for Ben?
No, Ben, I'd just like to thank you and your guys for, I know you respond to me a lot, you know, on the call and, and y'all get out there and get things, and get things done on it.
It's, it's an all-day, every-day, uh, effort. We love it and we're, we're, we're happy to be out there. You know, I think the partnership between ManShack and the Bossier City folks, um, I've spent many of late nights and early mornings out there and I hate to admit, but sometimes I'm the one bitching the worst, you know, they're, they're used to the heat and the mud and the sweat and the wet and, and, uh, I'm, I'm proud of the work they do, appreciate it.
Well, 9 million in savings is impressive. It continues to build. Thank you for your work.
Thank you all.
All right. We'll move on to unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to restore operation to water filling station at a cost of $15,000 to come from the Water Capital Contingency Fund. Final reading.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Williams.
Taken.
Second by Councilman Larkin. Any input from the audience? Counsel, cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance to authorize and appropriate funds to contribute to the employment of an executive director for Keep Bossier Beautiful. The expenditure will be divided equally between the Bossier Parish Sheriff's Office, Bossier Parish Police Cheering and the City of Bossier City. The annual salary and benefits package totals $65,000 with the city's portion totaling $21,677. And that is the final reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first by Councilman Larkin, a second by Councilman Harvey. Any input from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Okay, we'll move on to new business.
Mr. Darby, did you vote on that item?
I did, yes. Let's try it again.
Sometimes you gotta hit it twice.
There you go.
Thank you.
New business?
Under new business, uh, the first item under new business, um, the hearing to review the recommendation of demolition and removal of a dilapidated structure located at the following legal address, 1325 Airline Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana, 71112. Um, we got word this afternoon, they've asked for us to postpone this item until the 20th meeting and so there is no action at this time from the council needed.
Wait, commotion to that?
Okay, so we'll move on to item number two.
Bid opening for bid number P-1917 Parks and Recreation Sports Lighting Replacement.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this project is $3,560,000. The budget is $3,562,843. It's coming from the 2018 LCDA bond. There's one addendum, which made changes and clarification to the electric plans, the list of the production materials and manufacturers and that prior approval, uh, would be needed for the equipment materials. The first bid is from Camus Electric Company, Inc. The bid bond is included, they acknowledge the addendum. The next bid is from Geosport Lighting Systems, LLC. The bid bond is included, they acknowledge the addendum. It's for $2,263,000. The next bid is from Geosport Lighting Systems, LLC. The bid bond is included, they acknowledge the addendum. It's for $2,263,000. That's 2, 263, 000. The next bid is from Musco Sports Lighting, LLC. They, the bid bond is included, they acknowledge the addendum. It's for $2,292,015. That's 2, 292, 015. And the last bid is from Wellhite Electric Company, Inc. The bid bond is included, they acknowledge the addendum. It's for $2,773,825. That's 2, 773, 825.
We need a motion to accept the reading of these bids.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Williams.
Second.
Second by Councilman Free. Any input from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Okay, next item.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, petitioner Michael Wagnon, Louisiana Discount Tobacco, location 1650 Old Menden Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for the sale of high-content alcohol for off-premise consumption at a business.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Williams.
Second.
A second by Councilman Harvey. Any input from the audience? Sam, would you like to...
Uh, I just want, so they, they already have a low-content alcohol license, so they're just moving up to high, which is pretty typical nowadays of a lot of these places.
Any questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, petitioner Hempel, LLC, location 2360 Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for wireless telecommunication tower.
So moved.
Second. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Darby, a second by Councilman Larkin. Any input from the audience? Sam?
Uh, just repeat from, you know, what we talked about at the agenda meeting, uh, the, uh, there was no opposition from the 300-foot radius notification to the surrounding property owners. Uh, the board concluded that they complied with all the requirements of the telecommunication ordinance. And as far as cell towers go, it's not real tall, it's 110 feet tall, that's, that's quite a bit, um, shorter than, uh, typical cell towers in this area.
Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $80,000 from the sales tax capital projects fund to be used to supplement the already appropriated $90,000 with all funds to be used for concrete repairs at city hall parking lots.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first by Councilman Williams, a second by Councilman Darby. Any input from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to conduct repairs for the North Side Drive and Rome Street gravity mains at a cost of $300,000 to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first by Councilman Harvey, a second by Councilman Darby. Any input from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the sewer sub-basin BC 20 rehabilitation project for a total of $600,000 to come from the 2016 LDEQ loan, CS 221103-02. First reading.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Williams.
Second.
Second by Councilman Free. Any input from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $60,000 from the sales tax capital improvement fund to re-strike parking lots at the North Bossier Park and the Tennis Center and several other parks. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by Councilman Harvey, a second by Councilman Darby. Any input from the audience? And any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate an additional $420,000 from the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way Fund to be used for additional in, engineering and survey fees for the design of the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way. First reading.
So moved.
Okay.
We have a motion by Councilman Williams, a second by Councilman Larkin. Any input from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds to make repairs to pump number five at the reservoir pump station at a cost of $45,000 to come from the Water Capital and Contingency Fund. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Larkin, a second by Councilman Williams. Any input from the audience? Are there any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of five seasonal monitors, 10 seasonal scorekeepers and 30 seasonal officials for youth and adult sports for Parks and Recreation. First and final reading.
So moved.
Taken.
Motion by Councilman Williams, a second by Councilman Larkin. Any input from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the replacement of a deputy chief marshal, or deputy city marshal, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Taken.
So we have a motion by Councilman Williams, a second by Councilman Larkin. Any input from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one jailer for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Williams, a second by Councilman Darby. Any input from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the replacement of a maintenance mechanic in the garage. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Larkin, a second by Councilman Williams. Any input from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property through institution of exappropriation proceedings for street and water projects in connection with the Shed Road to Airline Water Main Project. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Harvey, a second from Councilman Darby. Any input from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property through institution of exappropriation proceedings for the street and water projects in connection with the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way Parkway North Extension Road Project and Water Line Project. First and final reading, and that's for Mr. Jim's Chicken.
So moved.
Taken.
We have a motion by Councilman Harvey, a second by Councilman Larkin. Any input from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing acquisition of property through institution of exappropriation proceedings for street and water projects in connection with the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way Parkway North Extension Road Project and Water Line Project. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Harvey, a second by Councilman Williams. Any input from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one laborer, two, and one seasonal mosquito sprayer for the Public Works Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Williams, a second by Councilman Free. Any input from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Approve report of change order number two for the Northeast Waste Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project for an increase of $58,464.87 total cost of contract with increase $12,814,300, I'm sorry, $12,814,344.94.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Williams, a second by Councilman Larkin. Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Approve report of change order number one for the Red River Waste Water Treatment Plant's Ledge Transfer Pump Project for an increase of $5,165.04 total cost of contract with increase $201,165.04.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Darby, a second by Councilman Larkin. Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Reappoint Billy Montgomery as the joint representative to the Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission, appointment effective August 30th, 2019, and expires August 30th, 2021.
So moved.
Taken.
We have a motion by Councilman Free, a second by Councilman Larkin. Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Approve parade permit fee waiver for Melissa Maggio, remembrance run Saturday, September 14th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Harvey and a second by Councilman Free. Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one part-time kennel worker for the Public Works Department. First and final reading.
So moved. So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Williams, a second by Councilman Larkin. Any input from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the engagement of an employment service for the hiring of temporary contract employees for labor use for the Bossier City Civic Center for the events requiring additional manpower for any nighttime turnaround requirements, and that's the first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Larkin, a second by Councilman Darby. Any input from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote. We have our add-on.
Our add-on is adopt a, I'm sorry, adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the City of Bossier City which affected property, public health and safety due to the requirement for utility relocation on Cross Creek Drive for a total of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Fifty percent of the funds are to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund and fifty percent from the Water Capital and Contingency Fund and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Foley Construction, Inc. for completion of the work. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by Councilman Larkin, a second by Councilman Williams. Any input from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote. Okay, that's all of our official business for today. Are there any announcements from the council?
No, I just want to say, being on the Sports Commission, we had a, we don't have all the numbers in, but the volleyball, you know, I saw Clay there and Scott. Volleyball was, I can't say success yet until we get all the numbers, but it was, it was a well-attended event. Good times, you never seen, I don't want to say professional, they're amateurs, but good volleyball matches.
And Bossier City got incredible media attention throughout the world.
Yes, and the U S A won it too, so.
Very impressive. Any other? I've got a legal notice.
I'd like to ask the chief something if you would come up for a moment. Chief of police?
Chief, Councilman Darby has a question.
I think you probably know the answer. In the city, in your department, is, is there a policy regarding your commission officer having their weapon at all times or not?
Yes, sir, they're required to be armed.
Is it the same with the Marshes office as well?
I, I can't answer that.
Is he, is he here?
Now, chief, when they're, when they're off duty, do they always carry one too? Is that what you're asking?
That's, that's really what I'm asking. Is it a required policy?
But I would say, I would say probably ninety-five percent of them do. I do.
They do?
And I concur. It's not, it's not a policy, but most of them carry their off-duty with them.
Do, do you know why it's not a policy over history?
When they're off-duty, we can't mandate that they be armed. I mean.
Aren't they commissioned?
Yes.
They are, but, but, you know, when they're, when they're off-duty, you can't, you can't require them to be at work twenty-four, seven. You know, they can be subject to call, but, but you can't require them to, to carry, you know, every second of the day, you know? Some of them might, might want to go out and eat and have a drink and you don't want them carrying one if they've imbibed in any alcohol at all, so.
Do you think all law enforcement divisions have the same policy of the City of Bossier and the Marshes Department?
I can't speak for that.
Yeah, I think, you know, with the recurrence of violence throughout our community, you know, it seems like those guys who are trained, I understand, like you said, if it's recreational, social drinking and consuming alcohol, that's different. But if not, it seems it would be advantageous to public concern. And I know it's something you might not.
I know, I carry even to church, you know? I carry my weapon with me. You know, yes, sir.
What church do you attend? I need to go there.
St. James Catholic Church. Welcome to come.
I would be afraid if you tried to make some type of mandation like that, that you'd have to compensate them for it.
You have what?
You'd have to compensate them for it.
Really?
That would be my, so.
I thought when they sworn to uphold the law and having that commission, it, it meant that they were obligated no matter what, e- even if something happens when they are just out and about, are they not required to respond?
They are, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
They are. That's jurisdiction, yes, sir.
Okay.
Right.
I was just curious.
I mean, that could be in Shreveport and they, they, you know, they could just be good witness over there. I mean, anyone has a right to, to stop a felony in progress, you know, but, but as far as arrest powers, nothing you can do, you know?
Yeah. Do, do we have a, a volunteer-type group in the city currently?
Yes, we have a reserve force.
We, we still have those guys in place. Do they, are they armed or?
Yes, sir. They go through basically the same training as a full. We have academy going right now, actually, reserve.
Okay, how many we have in, in, in that group?
I think right now we probably have around a dozen and in the academy, I think, maybe about five or six right now.
Do, do we have it in the Marshes?
Same, yes, sir. And Post is in the future going to be requiring that even reserves go through a full academy. So I don't know what it'll do to some of the smaller agencies that rely on volunteers that, that go through many academies, but that's going to go by the wayside and, and I mean, how can you argue against that, you know? Well, we think they need less training, you can't do that, so.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, I mean, just the frequency of incidents across the nation seem to dictate for us to be prepared at all.
Always vigilant, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
I'd just like to thank the councilman for asking those questions. I learned a lot just in that exchange right there. It's good, thought-provoking a lot. The questions and the answers both, yeah.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, I do have a legal notice to read. Notice is hereby given that a workshop will be held on Tuesday, August the thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, immediately following the agenda meeting, which begins at three P M in Bossier, in the Bossier City Council Chambers, six twenty Benton Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. The purchase, the purpose of this workshop is to go over the proposed two thousand twenty Bossier City operating and capital budgets. If there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned.